If we get started, this is special called meeting session meeting dated four fourteen two thousand twenty-three. On the agenda, we have discussion on Ford, cab and chassis and courthouse vehicle tax commissioner's office. And we need to discuss this buddy dump truck.
Well, if you want to just, you want to just take that documentation and keep the county attorney will be at the next meeting. So you might just want to take that and y'all review it for your purposes and then we'll, we'll put that on the agenda.
Okay, but I say we do need to discuss if it's possible about this excavator.
Yeah, if you want to discuss it at this meeting, that's fine, but if you want the county attorney here at the next meeting, he'll be at the next.
Yeah, I think we need to discuss it. We'll add that to it.
Okay.
And then documentation finding.
That's it. That's actually the excavator.
Okay. All right. Let's call a meeting order. First one discussion of Ford, cab and chassis.
So if y'all look into your packets.
Doug, has Andy been notified at this meeting that he need to be here?
I didn't, I didn't notify him. I mean, if he wants to be.
Y'all think he need to be here?
I mean, I told Shelley yesterday, so whether she told him, I don't know, but, but she was notified. I mean, he wasn't, he wasn't around. That's up to y'all.
But the truck, you know, you got two options basically here. The truck that they have down there now, the wheelbase is not long enough for the bed that Andy already has. He's already got a utility bed for it. So you're going to have to spend another seven thousand dollars for a bed if you can't use this.
How old is the bed? How old is that bed now that he's got?
I'm gonna say it's probably seven, eight years old, but it's in really good shape. It's one of use on an ambulance or an ambulance. Ford place, what would the bed Doug on?
They're in your packet. If you look back, um, so the first, first few pages are your older quotes that y'all loaded on. The second one is, I don't know what size length of the chassis he needs, so I got two quotes of one for a one forty-five point nine. And that's forty-eight thousand, seven sixty-five.
Yeah, he need one with eight foot.
And then the next one is a one sixty-nine wheelbase at one forty-eight, nine forty. And also included the cost of, Jeff had asked me to give about the cost of the beds. And in the back of that, if you look, it looks like this, this is from the Ford place.
I would, will give us the short version, but so what's the difference in the price of what we approved the first time?
Uh, one forty-five, seven is what y'all initially approved and then it could be one forty-eight, seven six five or one forty.
Four thousand dollars?
Yeah.
But Andy talked with the, what's the guy's name down there, Ford place, one that's involved?
Richard.
Yeah, he said that Richard said that he does remember Andy requesting dual wheels on it. And the extended frame rails, we could reuse that bed he already has. So you're looking at versus spending probably four thousand dollars to reorder the truck. Or you're going to spend another seven, eight thousand dollars for a bed.
Are we just getting one dual wheel?
Yeah.
So really all we're meeting about is to approve four thousand dollars more for a dual wheel, one dual wheel truck.
Right.
And everything else is the same.
Yeah. Well, that's what it boiled down to. You either have to buy another bed for seven thousand dollars or you put by roughly four thousand dollars and reorder the truck. And the Ford Richard said that no issue with the truck they ordered, it would be sold in about two or three days. So we'll open it up for any discussions and questions on it or we'll call for a motion to go one way or the other.
What is the dual wheel? What are we going to be doing? Is this to transport our employees?
Yeah, he'd be hauling fuel tank, all that stuff like that. And it'd be the one that, uh, they're going to be going out to be used for also if they have an emergency. Where you got one trailer already hooked, one, you know, with small backhoes, you got two backhoes, you got two trailers. And then he'll be able to pull that trailer where we need to go to. I say that's according, you know, to what Andy said.
How many dual wheel trucks does he have now?
He got one dual wheel truck.
One dual wheel truck? I guess too much stuff to look at.
The dump trucks that we have now, how many is total that's running?
He's got, uh.
Four of the base.
Four.
Four.
But he said one was on his last leg. I thought he said.
Yeah, that's the one that more or less broke all the bolts out of the back of the transmission and stuff the other day. And then they got up on there, much to his surprise too, they were actually able to change the bolts out after a bit of work on it and get it back going, but.
So this is going to be a regular cab?
Yeah. Yeah, regular cab truck. And like I say, he's going to retire the one that he uses now, that old eighty, early eighty model. Four, four door dual truck, dual wheel truck. He gonna retire it.
So the dual wheel he has is the eighty, the nineteen eighty?
Yeah, that's probably going to be somewhere around.
Eighty-six, okay.
You know, that truck, that probably will be somewhere around eighty-two, eighty-three, that white one. And then he's got the other truck, you know, that's like a ninety-seven. The one Rico drive going to the limb cutters, you know, to the limb cutter, then that's the one that's front end was slammed out, motor was out. He's getting by with it right now, but just soon as get these other trucks in, that truck need to be parked along with this other dump truck, the white one. That needs to be parked and declared surplus and get, get rid of it. But I told Andy, I said, when you get this other dump truck in, I said, please do not put this truck back on the road. I said, don't try to use it. I said, we just need to surplus it, get rid of it, get rid of the liability. So he's an agreeist for that, you know, that that truck will be parked immediately just as soon as the other one comes in.
And we don't have any confusion on the other trucks that's coming in as far as.
Yeah, everything found on them. Yeah, yeah, everything. It's just this one truck is in, in question. And like I say, at that time, Andy, that's when he was so sick, you know, with all this taking place. Because he liked to die it on us, you know, and when they got those stents out, he'd be starting to recover. But you know, in his defense, he was not able to go up there and look after everything and look at the invoice and stuff, you know, the way it was rolled up. But like I say, Richard says he does remember that Andy told him about the wheelbase and the dual wheels. So the question now is y'all want to move forward with this for an additional roughly four thousand dollars?
And this will be the only dual wheel we have after we sell the other one?
Well, he's got that gray one down there.
He got a pretty new one that we bought.
Twenty twenty-two.
Last year. He got a pretty new one that we bought last year. That's his fast response one that he leaves hooked up all the time. So he's got that one that's a twenty-two and then, and then he want one.
Yeah, he uses to take out excavator, not excavator, but the, uh, well, if he gonna move the excavator, you know, he'll use it a lot of times. You know, that little limb cutter outfit and then, uh, he uses it to transport the small backhoe without the job stuff. Already using it, but it's, it's sitting there about like lady said, you know, it's not a everyday driver.
It's a crew cab too, ain't it?
Yeah, it's that dark gray one. Yeah, four door, dual wheel. Got the diesel engine and all that stuff in it.
Could we use it to transport some of this stuff?
Uh, yeah, he uses it, like I say, you know, but you know, get back to it, you're looking at your bed again.
But if we went, if we went a different route, I mean, it's going tires. You know, the next time you buy a truck, I mean, it's going to be all you pull out. I know it's a lot of money to upkeep a duty because I got one. I done got away from them because, because of that, but I'm not saying, I mean, I, he may need another truck to pull. I don't know.
He told me that would be an important part of his road department down there. And like I say, keep in mind, you either going to have to spend roughly four thousand dollars or you're going to spend several thousand dollars for another bed to fit this truck at Ford place at now. You know, the bed he got now, you can't cut it down. It was a special built bed, you know, we carried damage body over there, you know, truck two of them and they custom built that bed for that wheel with, you know, base. And that's what he's after now, wanting to just bolt it right back down to it and go back to work with it.
Yeah. The bed on the one you was talking about, the emergency response, it's just a regular black bed or is it a flat bed or?
It's flat bed, it's flat bed type, you know, it's got two bolts and stuff.
Yeah.
You know, under the bottom of it and stuff.
Right. That's the one we got. That's the one we bought last year.
I know the one you talking about buying now is just like this, but.
Regular cab.
Regular cab.
Regular cab.
And gas.
It's a diesel, ain't it? The one you're buying?
Uh, it's gas.
Oh, it's got the gas in it? You got a, is there a picture of that truck that we're going to take the bed off of?
The bed's already sitting down there. If he's had that truck been long gone, it was surplused out for scrap, the truck it was.
He's going to use them in the, we're not going to use this truck to pull. Anything like we're going to do this new truck coming?
Yeah, he puts, now he does, he hook, he will hook a fifth wheel and everything else trailer to this truck because he's wanting with the dual wheels.
So this truck, right, this gray truck, it stays hooked up to the gooseneck all the time?
Right. Then he was talking about also that, you know, they got the pipe trailer down there. And a lot of times one joint pipe will not do the job, so they had to carry another piece of cut piece, you know, down there. And he said with that short wheelbase frame, you're not going to be able to haul that pipe on the back bed like they were able to. That was another thing he threw it out.
Uh, so we're looking at four thousand versus?
Seven, eight thousand.
I want to, but you talking about you going to put a seven, eight year old bed on it too. I ain't seen the bed, so I mean, I don't know. I mean, they say it's okay.
We know that bed's going to fit?
Yeah.
And they rusted out or nothing?
No. No, that bed's in good shape.
Yeah.
So my recommendation would be to go ahead and reorder what he's requesting because he is the one that has to use it and he knows what he needs.
I mean, by all means, if it's going to be used to pull and, you know, do what it's intended for for dual wheel, I just, you know, if we're just going to buy it for transport or something, I wouldn't.
Now, it'd be, it would be, it would be a daily worker.
Right, yeah.
Well, if that's going to be the case, he needs to hook this truck to the gooseneck that just sits there all the time and use that four door one that can haul people around with. You know what I mean? Like, he needs to hook this truck to, to be the fast response and this one. You can't haul people in that. You could haul people in, you see what I'm saying?
Because it would be used primarily for the grass cutting, you know, more than crew.
Yeah.
You know, so you hadn't got the two of them going out.
Right.
In that truck.
Right, okay. Well, I reckon I'm making motion.
All right, we have a second to proceed forward with reordering the truck that Andy needed dual wheels with the wheelbases he's requesting. So we have a motion, we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carried. Okay, next on the agenda is courthouse vehicle tax commissioner's office.
Um, let me go back to that, the thing, because I'll, I'll call the Ford place. Which, which length do you want? Y'all want the, there's two lengths here. I mean, do you want this?
Andy said eight, eight foot, what Andy told me. But double check with Andy because like I say, Andy knows what he got going on down there.
I'll be, I'll be with him.
Yeah, double check with him and make sure about this because he the one that knows what's going on.
Well, it definitely has got to fit that bed.
So what is that bed?
Okay, now we have the courthouse vehicle.
Uh, I was just asked by Miss Christine to put that on there. Um, I guess you guys will receive text messages, so I don't know what, what's other than that. I just know that the vehicle is an older vehicle. It's, it's, uh, it's seen its days. Um, you know, the sheriff donated a vehicle that we were going to put for the cleaning and we've got the blazer. So it, it, you know, there's two options you guys got is the mileage reimbursement will put the blazer there for the courthouse. Because I know all the other departments also use, or I guess they said they would. So that's up to you, two different options.
What, uh, what did the legal mileage rate, you know?
Sixty-five point five cents. That's the IRS rate.
Sixty-one?
Sixty-five point five cents. That's the IRS.
Sixty-five and a half.
Yeah, sixty-five and a half. That's the IRS for twenty twenty-three.
Ms. Jennifer, I see you sitting here. You have anything you want to say?
I do. Um, there's actually three options. Um, and the third option consists of the board adopting it. It's that expense allocation. Um, that you all can sign up on where it pays a hundred dollars a month. We drive out, I drive my vehicle and we don't have to worry about the other two options that was brought to me. The older vehicle, me personally, they're not fit to be on the highway. I've driven one of them and it's cutting off, I want to say at the bank, it's dug, no, they had to go and jump it off.
Put a new rat battery in it.
And, and I hauled a lot of money around to have to even think of this maybe happening. That second option, uh, mileage reimbursement, I went through that years ago. We recorded the mileage, turned it in, may have been before y'all time, and we never got compensated for it. So I'm asking the board if y'all would consider that third option and just go ahead and end this here situation. Of traveling back and forth to the bank during the county duties. Feel much safer. No liability because as it is vehicles now, as we want to drive them and get here, our insurance, we got hurt. Our insurance will have to be the one to pay, not the county, because it's just liability insurance to county.
Well, we got a different board that's doing a lot of things, a lot different. I'm patting them on the back. Uh, like I said, we got those three options. If she can keep up with the mileage, then we will make sure that she reimbursed. What are we looking at roughly per month that way, Doug? Do you have any idea?
It's, uh, I put it in your packet. I drove it yesterday. It's point eight eight miles. Um, it's about a hundred and ninety-three miles per year if you, if you did that.
It's point eight eight going?
It's round trail. It's going to Peoples, Peoples to First State, First State, back around to the bank and driving around Square Park. So it's a point eight eight, the whole.
I got different from what you got.
Like I, I mean, I've got it where my recorder shows everything we did.
What did you get, Ms. Jennifer?
I got a round trip. I got like one point one eight.
So unless, did you go to Ameris? Because I didn't put Ameris. Okay, so I mean, I, I've got what, what shows.
Sometimes it costs for me to go to other counties and pick up things that not needed, that I don't have in my office. So I would have to use that same vehicle there. I have it in the early county, I have it in the Decatur county. So it's not just the bank I would be going to.
So as it is, we, when you go off to school and stuff, we reimburse them mileage correctly.
Right, right, right. When I go off to school. Oh, I have the option to drive the county vehicle. Which I did that one year, but it wasn't the white one because it was in the shop at the time.
But actually, actually, Mr. Allen requested a contract and it, and it stayed centered that they must provide me with a vehicle and that, that's the vehicle that they.
So we, we pay you mileage on stuff already?
Yeah. I mean, when I go to school.
When you go, but I mean, but I mean, we paying you mileage now? We paying you mileage when you go to school?
Yeah.
When you go to school, you getting a check?
Yes.
You getting reimbursed?
I turn in my mileage when I get back.
So.
And they cut me a check.
So we already doing that, right?
Therefore, when she goes to school, when I'm going to the bank.
I mean, I ain't talking about that. I'm talking about we.
Yeah.
I mean, you, so I mean, you been getting a check. You been getting a check. You said you hadn't been getting a check.
No, I said I hadn't even.
In the past. Yeah, but you, but you do turn in mileage and get a check for other things.
Right, I was turning in mileage to get a check for that also, but I didn't get it.
Well, we gonna make sure, we gonna make sure you do this time. We gonna make sure.
Let me say something, because I know you guys got that text message and you saw that text message. In that text message, she did say she recorded it, turned it and didn't get reimbursed. I've asked Quinlin it since she's been here. And like Ms. Jennifer just cleared it up, it may, it may have been before us, but I'm sure it was not.
Yeah, we did.
It's not been a very few years. Yeah, so Quinlin, I just wanted to make sure.
Right, no, that's what lady was asking. No, I did not get it. Did not turn in when they was here. It was prior. And I think I quoted that even prior. I don't know, other counties, they adopted that option, that third option, the expense mileage. And it's, it's done. After every election, if, if the board decide we don't want to do that, then y'all can take it up to the table, just like you put it on the table.
Well, I think, I think I would be in favor of if, if you go into training or go into other counties and you turn in mileage, just add this in with that. And, and handle it like that is what I would like to do. I mean, no, I'm not, I'm talking about like this, so like.
You would be in favor of the mileage reimbursement, basically what you said.
Correct, correct.
Let me ask you this. If, if we did do the, and I'm just asking, if we did do the one hundred per month, would that cover like if you went to on class and everything?
Not on class. That would just cover any duties of the county, not my school. Because see, I budget for the schooling and travel.
Gotcha. And so, but if you went to other counties and stuff, it. Gotcha. And so, but if you went to other counties and stuff, it would cover that as well?
Right, if I went to other counties, then I would have to turn in the mileage.
So that would be the hundred dollars a month plus the mileage?
No, now, if I, if I had that now, um, that would be included if I went to Early County, if I went to the bank. Only thing it would not include is when I go to school. That's the only thing. Everything else is taken care of.
And your girls, what they do, you'd be doing the thing, right?
Yes, yes, yes. I will be doing, I will be taking my vehicle, uh, and I will be doing. I think this is, to me, I feel like that third option is the best option to go. Talking with other counties and all, I understand the mileage reimbursement is what we have to record every mile. They have to have a law sheet. And record every mileage and turn it in once a month. This way right here, doing this third option, is, is done and it's over with. Y'all have nothing to worry about. I have.
But now, if you get in a wreck on your own personal vehicle, do it in county business. Your county gonna be liable.
Absolutely.
Is the county liable now?
Yes. If you're using, if you're doing, if you're doing company business on your vehicle.
Yes.
Our insurance covers.
Okay, so, so with that being said, now I'm gonna use my brother for instance that had the wreck, and I know you all are aware of my brother and the incident that he had. So when he got hit, the county is not liable for him. He has to file on his own insurance.
Not for the vehicle.
Yeah.
Not for the vehicle.
Right, right, that's right. So I'm on this vehicle. So if I got hit, and if I got hurt, would the county be liable for me?
The reason they're not liable for you is because it was the other driver's fault, is, but now, we, we've had to turn in, as far as the vehicle, ACCG's paid us.
Right, right.
But as far as him being hurt, wasn't that because it was the other driver's fault?
Right, that's with liability insurance, where it's a full coverage.
The one who's fault is the one who was responsible.
Yeah, we've got full coverage.
Liability?
No, we've got full coverage, like, right there on all the vehicles, because if we hit somebody like that guy, the student, you know, we had to pay.
Well, we pay out, yes. We'll pay out. I, I think what they have is, 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 is two different, kinda confusing. You know, the ACCG Irma states it's liability, but it's full coverage. I mean, we have to pay a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible for every instance, so that's where they consider it li- the liability. But they pay completely. If, if anything's damaged, she's referring it to is, is the person, personal.
That's paid out of workers. It's like paid out of two funds. The trunk is paid out of the, like, the, our umbrella coverage, the personal hurt is paid out of workers' comp. Isn't that how they explain it?
Yes, so, so, so our, our insurance does not cover personal injury. That goes to the workers' comp, because they're on workers' comp. They're on duty.
But one thing I'm trying to get at, are we responsible for her vehicle being totaled?
She's doing company time, or the duty of company time, we're responsible for that vehicle.
As, that's not the way the other counties related to me. They actually related that the county would not. My insurance, I'm responsible. The county would be. I kinda did a little researching on that with other counties.
And I've got some stuff in there too, for y'all.
Yeah, I was looking at from Seminole County manager. Uh, question was asked, do any of you provide a vehicle on a daily basis for your tax commissioner to make deposits in? Seminole County manager responded, no, we pay the girl's mileage once, twice a year. All right, Early County manager stated no from early. Decatur County said no. Baker County said, we have a vehicle that they can use if they want to, shared by the tax commissioner's office.
Yes, that's reference to the vehicle, Doug. As far as that money, she's talking about that, that was not. That's, that's a totally different subject. But that's, that's as far as the vehicle providing the A vehicles.
And that's what those county does, but there's other county that does adopt that expense.
The small blazer, it's in pretty good shape, man.
I, I couldn't, I mean, I haven't had any issues with it. I mean, the cleaning girl, when they drove, she, you know, I mean, one of them drove quite a bit. And we ain't just put tires on it and.
The Tahoe, is it good shit?
We haven't tested it yet. We haven't fully tested it. I mean, it come out of surplus, it come out of the, the jump lot over there.
Yeah, most of them vehicles come out of that jump lot, and they, um, those are the one that I was like.
I know, I know the Tahoe's gonna have to have tires.
I make a motion that we adopt the mileage rate. She turns in the mileage once a month, and we cut her a check, and then she can drive her vehicle. We'll pay for her vehicle if she gets in a wreck. And we don't have to have a truck sitting up there.
Well, our insurance will pay for, our insurance will pay for her vehicle.
Right, right. If she gets in an accident while she's on duty. And then we don't have to worry about unsafe truck for her to drive in.
So who the people with the miles?
You.
Who's going to do them?
Can't, you can't, you can't, I mean, we, we did it already. How many times you go a year? How many times you go to the bank? How many days you work a year? Two hundred and twenty?
Two thousand eight hours.
Hmm, how many days of, how many?
Okay, you calculated.
Two hundred and twenty days? I got it right, I got it right here. So I already know. I already know, so I mean.
No, I just sent it to you. I figured you did it.
Yeah, I already know.
Okay, so we have a motion to pay her mileage at, what, sixty-five point five cents per mile, is that correct?
Sixty-five, yeah, sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
So I gotta get together on the mileage exactly, not the eight point something, eight that, um, Doug come up with?
What was the difference?
And then, and like I say.
I, I did it record, I did it, I mean, I don't know if you wanna trust it, but I did it recorded, and I've got the map on the, you see the map, you see the actual distance.
What about when I go to other cities?
Keep your mileage. There's a little button right there, you mash right there, on your car.
I am standing there, mashing button. On what? On what? On this here, um, county vehicle? I'll be driving, I'll drive in my vehicle.
You drive your vehicle and get mileage for driving.
For the wear and tear on the tires.
Well, that's what mileage is paying. That's what, that's what.
Not, not just mileage.
Well, that's what mileage does. It pays you for wear and tearing gas.
Yeah, that's why they did the sixty-five.
And that's, that's why they do the sixty-five.
That's, that's the IRS mileage, it's paid, covers gas and.
Gas and wear and tear and everything on your vehicle. That's what it does.
Well, I don't know about the wear and tear.
That's what.
Tires. So y'all gonna give me a set of tires?
No, the sixty-five point five percent pays for that.
You can get a set of tires a year out of that. Well, I'm gonna let that come out to be a year.
Well, you're only driving a hundred and ninety-three point six miles.
I haven't calculated yet.
You can get fifty thousand miles, you can get fifty thousand miles out of a set of tires.
Maybe more when I go out of town.
It gonna be fifty thousand miles? You gonna drive fifty thousand miles a year? I mean, that's what a set of ti- I'm just saying, a, a set of tires, you can get forty, fifty thousand miles out of a set of tires.
But, but regardless, we'll make sure that you get paid for the correct mileage, absolutely.
How many times a month, Jennifer, do you go, like, to Blakely or to, I mean, would you go a couple of times or?
It is very little, a couple of times.
The reason I'm asking that, if you do go multiple times a month, it may benefit you to do the mileage versus just a hundred dollars.
And that's why I said I was not trying to beat nobody, but settling for the hundred dollar. I knew I was beating myself. I was just trying to deescalate this here situation. Because it's been going on ever since I took office in two thousand and nine, two thousand and nine. So here we are, thirteen, fourteen years later, and I'm still having the problem.
Well, this is the industry norm. This is how ninety percent of the, America does it, is they do it by this rate.
Oh, yes, that I know. Well, you know, ninety percent, not a hundred percent.
I didn't say.
But there are some that does.
There's some that do different, that's, yeah, but this is, so I mean, we just wanna be in line with everybody else. And this'll pay you for tires, oil, whatever, whatever you need, gas, it's gonna pay you for all of that. So if you go to Blakely, if you go, if you go to Atlanta, Athens, whatever, it's gonna pay you. And then you get to drive your car. You don't have to be in an unsafe vehicle that came from the inbound lot at the sheriff's department. I wouldn't wanna drive one, I mean, I'll be honest.
So getting back to it, we have a motion.
I'm not, I'm, I'm here with the attorney, because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not for driving my car. For such, um, um, still doing counties' duties. I would strongly advise for you all to talk to you all. And y'all do have an option to adopt that third period. So that's what I'm looking for, and I respect if y'all don't wanna adopt it, how it's been, how it's been.
But we have a motion.
The vehicle, when you're talking about her, or this lady, what is it, or is it?
It's a blazer. I don't, I think it's two thousand and four. I think it comes from the road, that one comes from the road department. It's in that book right there.
It's been a good vehicle, because we purchased it from Tallahassee down there at the surplus estate, you know. They done a little amount of work to it, the vehicle, but a good one, even the tax assessor's office, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they used it at one time.
Is there air and heat in there?
Yes.
Because during the winter, we had to drive out with that, because, I mean, I don't have a problem driving county vehicles. The problem I have with county vehicles is the one that I've been given, they all come from the field. As you all know, you had told them that, so to me, they're not liable on the highway. They all had a body damage. I know what y'all are saying, the motor and all that is okay. Some got to have some tires put on. The one I had, they had me jumped off. Now this blazer you're talking about, it's got everything. I shouldn't have no problem.
It's, it, it, now, with any older vehicle, or like Jeff said one time, a newer vehicle, when a battery dies, the battery dies. There's nothing you can do about it. That's why they sell batteries constantly.
Especially if it's cool.
This vehicle, I, I can't go out there and put a stamp on it and say everything's one hundred percent perfect, because the battery could go down on it, the, the radiator hose could break. It just, it could break on a new car or an old car. I can only tell you what, we haven't had any issues with it since the cleaning people were driving it.
So the cleaning people, why did they stop driving?
Because we're gonna put them in a bigger vehicle, because they're gonna drive triple the miles that you would drive on a daily basis.
Yeah, how old are their cleaners?
Yes, because they, they, they drove the cleaners, and all that stuff, and that little one's just too small. And it, then again, I mean, the Tahoe may not work out. I mean, we haven't put it to the test yet. But I know it needs tires. That's the reason it's not, you know, it's not fully functional just yet.
Okay, so we'll go back to, again, we got a motion on the table. Do we have a second on this, or y'all wanna look at?
Yes, we doing the mileage, but as Doug said, the county vehicle is applicable, is safe.
Yeah.
And you would be okay with that?
I mean, I'm not gonna put my stamp on it, but I say it's safe enough to drive.
It's got air and heat and all that good stuff in there.
Well, we have the option of furnishing her with the Chevrolet blazer and letting her drive it.
Whatever y'all's motion you wanna put in.
Go ahead, Ms. Jennifer, what was you gonna say?
Nah, I'm just saying I would continue to drive a county vehicle as long as it's safe, since the third option is off the table period, it sounds like. Um, I will continue to drive a county vehicle as long as it's safe. I don't wanna be, and he can't one hundred commit, but I understand.
I can take it down to Andy and them and let them go through it.
Well, that's what was told about the other one. You were gonna take it to Andy and you never got done.
Well, I did take it to Andy, and he said he knew that the heater wasn't working, because there was a flap, and it would cost more to fix that.
When nobody, nobody told you.
Well, I think the guys, I think Brad's guys took it back there, and you wasn't there. Was that when Douglas called back?
Well, Brad guy told me, I know what the problem is, Jennifer, and I can fix it, but I'm not gonna, I can't.
Which one was that?
Uh, Douglas.
Doug. He didn't tell you that? I don't know that. Tell me anything, or is that?
Okay, what's y'all feeling on this?
If y'all want to take it to the road department, I can take it to a service center, or something y'all.
Where we got a certified mechanic down there, Mac.
If we're gonna use a county, this is my opinion, if we're gonna supply a vehicle for, it, it does need to be reliable, and, and by all means. And. Does anybody else use the vehicles up there? How do they?
I, I, I've heard from people, I'm not calling nobody names, but I've heard from people saying that, why they, why they don't get a vehicle to make deposits, that everybody makes deposits. So.
Why they don't do what?
Why, why they don't get a vehicle to make deposits. So my, my thought was is to put it up there at the courthouse, put courthouse vehicle on it, and let the whole, let everybody use it.
Correct.
Do they go to the bank every day?
They said they do.
They said they do?
Yes. That's, uh, I'm not getting into that.
So they never asked for mileage?
What's that?
They never asked.
Nobody asks for mileage in this county. That's every done, any county work other than your department.
Right, right, and that's been since two thousand and nine I've been at.
Probably longer than that. I don't think we've ever paid by, unless they go off to conference, they. Oh, you, but, but like other people, when they go off to school, they, they get mileage too. That's the only time they ask for mileage.
Okay, we being pushed for time. We got like twenty-two minutes before next week starts. What's y'all feeling on, y'all want on?
Well, you got a motion, you got.
Yeah, we got a motion, we got a deal with it. Either we, we get a second on it, or Laden can redraw it, and we move to another option.
What's the motion?
The motion was to pay sixty-five point five cents per mile once a month.
So we gonna, I'm gonna drive the county vehicle.
So you would rather drive the county vehicle?
So you need to retract it.
Yeah, Laden, you need to retract it if we not gonna get a second.
If we don't get, if we don't get a second, then it just pays.
And what I said, since you're not adopting that third option, then I would go back with the county, as long as it's a liable vehicle.
And let's make sure just take it, you, that, everything you have. If that's the way we go.
Yeah, I think that's probably the least, the least problems. We just, just give her the blazer, get Mac to check it out at the road department, give her the thumbs up, and then swap vehicle with her, and then we can surplus the other one.
That's the way we're going. I'll make a motion to get a reliable vehicle for the county for her to use.
Yeah, the blazer. The S ten blazer.
Her or the courthouse, because I've got them.
Courthouse, courthouse. It needs to be up there for everybody to use.
Well, the key was always kept in my office, and nobody even came in. I thought I was the only one using it. I didn't know there was others wanting to use.
Well, it'll be an option if we need it.
Yeah.
You know, it'd just be an option if we need it. So Jeff, you made a motion to go forward with the S ten blazer. You okay with that?
What I'm saying, if the option's not there for the mileage, then that's, I do.
Do we have a second?
For the, for what you're saying with the.
To provide a vehicle for.
The S ten blazer.
Yeah, for the courthouse.
Okay, I'll second that.
Reliable.
Right.
Yeah.
All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Jennifer. Okay, second is documentation, finding from re- findings for requests, research.
Now, this, like I said, this is documentation. If you guys wanna talk about it now, or if you just wanna review it, and county attorney will be here at the next meeting. This is where Laden and Jeff had asked me to look into the legality of using a tractor to pull a, uh, excavator. And all the documentation that I found is from ACCG Irma and the state patrol and MCCD, but it's through the state patrol, so.
So what was our finding?
Uh, the finding is. The finding is that it is illegal for a county to tow an excavator with a tractor. Um, there is a provision in there, and it's, it's marked and it's highlighted that a tractor, a farmer, what their definition is, a farm. An agricultural vehicle has to be owned by a farmer and can be used by his employees or the family. Um, it has to tote agriculture products. So it's, it's right here, it's the one that's in yellow, if you guys will look at it. Um, and I'll read it to you. It says, uh, as used in this paragraph, the term agricultural vehicle means a farm vehicle which is controlled and operated by a farmer. Including operation by employees of a family, or family members used to transport agricultural products, farm machinery, or farm supplies to and from a farm. And operate within a hundred and fifty miles of su- such said farm, which vehicle is not used in operations of a common or contracted carrier. Any waiver must be by the federal motor carrier. So, and, and in a sense, I've. So, and, and since I've actually also reached out to the county attorney, and his, his quick response was, it's illegal. But he said there's a longer response that he would like to talk to you guys at the next meeting about, so, that's, that's where we are.
Okay, well, I talked, it'll be a different opinion, I talked, and Andy did also, with a local DOT person. And we both got the same response from him, and we questioned him about it, he went to his commanding officer. And said there was nothing illegal about Andy and him pulling that excavator with a tractor on that trailer. So then I took a step further yesterday, I called, uh, MCCD, which is Motor Carrier Compliance Division in Atlanta, and I spoke with a captain Stephen Sample. And he sent, uh, Inspector Jonathan Swenson Digger, or something like that, down here, yesterday evening, I met with Andy. The guy was coming from Atlanta, he lives in Tipton, but he would come and lit, Atlanta went to make, uh, Americas, and then he intercepted him and sent him down here. So Andy and him, and him went out there and looked at it, this guy gave, I mean, a extreme inspection of the machine. He got out with his tape measures, he measured everything, he got all the weights off everything, what it was. He, uh, done an inspection on the tractor, the lights, just on the trailer, the tractor, the, he didn't name it, I mean, he went through it with a fine toucan. And then, uh, the only two things that he found were the tag light was messed up on the back, where the tag is, on the back of the trailer. And one running light on the trailer was not working properly. The tractor he recommended, did not have to do it, but put a new tire on the front, because it was getting warm for the bad. But in conclusion, he said that it was not against the law, that the county could use that tractor to move his thing with. And another option they have, is go and apply for a Class E driver's license.
And that's what I'm saying, it's probably not illegal, but it's illegal not to have CDLs. So, I mean, you can pull it, but you gotta have CDLs.
This guy said no.
And that's what ACCG are, are.
Because I spoke, I called again and talked to this guy this morning, you know, I listened to what Andy had to say, and I called and talked to the captain Stephen Sample. And he said we were not breaking any laws, that it was fully legal for them to do what they're doing, because Andy checked on the law to start off with before this thing was done, roughly two years ago.
I just, what they told me, the documentation from, from our side, so maybe we do need the county.
Yeah, and the MCCD of ours said that they have, I don't say so, of all of it. And so, you know, I called to talk to this guy this morning, and I told him I appreciate him going out to wait, to send someone down there to inspect, that this guy even checked the lug nuts on all this stuff. I mean, he got out the truck, and he told Andy, he says, I'm going to do my job, regardless of what outcome comes. The guy was real nice, real professional, and he done it. He gave Andy two thumbs up for what Andy had done. And that's what that guy told me this morning in Atlanta, that Andy had went overboard to make sure that he had mirrors wide enough to be able to see, he's even added flashing lights on the back of the trailer, all this stuff to make sure. Andy has a vehicle goes out in front of him when he moves his thing, and then he has one behind him.
What is the MCCD?
That's the Motor Carrier's Division.
Compliance Division.
And I said, he said, we are perfectly.
That's what Will West said, that, that MCC says no. I mean, we, we may need to get some people here to.
Will West is with the state patrol.
But he asked MCCD.
That's supposed to stop you.
So I mean, I don't know, I mean, we're here two different things, we may need to get some, some people here too.
But I've got the guy's phone number, if anybody wants to call him in Atlanta, we are free, I'll give it to y'all. You know, I give y'all a phone number, this guy.
Well, we just get the county attorney, and we can all.
That's why I said, he said he could come to the next meeting if y'all wanted, wanted him here. He said he'd be glad, glad to.
But he said the only stipulation to it was, you cannot be doing nothing but with the county when you're doing this. You've got to have your stickers on stuff, you know, showing it's your county, you know, for you.
Right.
And he said that, uh, you can't get out here on the weekend and do personal stuff or commercial stuff. He said, but now you can go on up there to the driver's license DMV, apply for Class E license. And Andy said he wanted to do that with a couple of more, of the people going out and get that done. But now, I got, there's still applies to the stuff about having the vehicles marked. You know, he said you can hook to one of the small dump trucks, you can go anywhere you want to, along this county-related business.
I would suggest having a county attorney, just for the simple fact of having it on the minutes, that whatever he says, if we, if we do it, we do it, if we're not, we're not. And that would release the county either way, yes or no?
You know, I say, I definitely want to make sure that, you know, that we were getting everything, you know, straight.
That's what y'all want, I'll get him.
If the board, I mean, if that's what they want to do, that's just what I feel like.
No, I think we need to have the attorney on, yeah, on records.
Yeah, I agree with that.
He will be here at the next meeting.
But now, Andy went ahead and he moved the excavator, because he asked that inspector to come down here, he said, can I transport this excavator? And he said, yes, absolutely. So he moved it out to Miss Christine's Road out there, where he'd be tired for quite a while now. Because this whole thing was holding up, you know, anything getting done, the excavator was dead right there where it was at. And I did, I have no idea what the outcome was gonna be on inspection, because like Andy did, because Andy was sweating bullets.
I totally understand, I was just, for the protection of the county, let's just get the attorney in, and let him tell us, and we got recorded in minutes.
And if the county attorney wants to call to talk to this guy, I'd be more than glad to supply him with a name and phone number to this division of that. So I guess that's it then, for this meeting, is that correct?
That's it, yes.
We need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second?
A second.
Motion carried, we are adjourned.